Okay, we'll go ahead and commence our work session this afternoon. The regular meeting won't be till five. Chris, I think you're...
Yes, sir.
...about first there, sir.
Do I get to come to the podium?
I do.
Please.
Wherever you want.
All right. I think I have informally talked to y'all about a county supplement that's been on the books since 1971 for our assistant district attorneys where they get $12,000 in a county's in a supplement to their salary. We are proposing, or I am asking you to support, increasing that to $24,000 for each one of those assistant DAs. And that's, it's been 40 years or so since that's been changed. We want to remain competitive in the market. And anyway, that's, that's the gist of it. I've talked to Philip Pettis, who would sponsor the local legislation. So what I'm asking y'all to do is, is approve or voice your support of it. And if you will, then I will try to get a local act passed in legislature. We've looked at other counties that do this type thing and lots of other counties supplement DA pay. High is in Jefferson County puts in about nine million, some put in, we put in what, you know, you're putting in. In addition to those three, you're also supplementing. An investigator gets $12,000 and one of my secretaries gets some money. We're not asking for anything other than to adjust the pay of that supplement up and just kind of update it from 40 years going in.
Main total people that they've been...
It's a total of four. And that's, that's a point, Danny. We cap it. There's a, there's a chief assistant DA and then there's three assistant DAs. So I've got a proposed, that's the proposed legislation. I'm on the one that's here already. So when we were researching this, we discovered and we did not know that our chief assistant DA under a local act was supposed to be getting $16,004 instead of, or sixteen...
Sixteen two.
Sixteen two and has only been getting 12. So we, I've talked briefly with Brenda about that. We need to correct that and essentially pay her what she has been due since she became the chief assistant in January of 17. Going forward, we're not asking for her, for her supplement to be any more than the assistant DA. So what you would end up doing, and I think the statute that I've given you says that the county commission shall pay that money. So I mean, she's due the, that money since 17. And then going forward from 17 to, to now, I mean, hopefully with Philip will, if y'all will, if y'all will endorse this, then I want to get with Philip about sponsoring in the legislature. But, but my point about the chief assistant is we will, the law just get the 24,000. We're not going to have a chief assistant getting more of a supplement than the assistant DA.
That, that was written in 1973. That, that, that 16,200, that's an annual salary. That's not monthly or anything.
Right, right.
So...
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. And so when we, when Chris showed it to me, we went back and looked to see and for some reason, they never paid the chief assistant that amount. It never got caught. I'm really surprised it didn't get caught in the audit or something some time ago. But it was written in 1973. So we'll owe her from 2017 until now, you know, the difference, which is going to be about $29,000 that we'll owe her for. And that would be a lump sum payment. And then after that, we've, we've already, I've already made arrangements to pay her the what she's supposed to be making, the correct salary on her next paycheck. It'll be, it'll have that amount, you know. But that's, that, those were wrote, the original was wrote in 71 and then they added that for the chief, that one person to get that 16,2 in 1973. And for some reason, it never got put in the system. And so, but Angie's the only employee that still works here under that job. So we owe her the back pay.
Right. And you know, we want, and I mentioned, I mean, we want to, we want to, we've got good folks in our office prosecuting criminals, helping victims. We want to keep them there. I mean, you know, I don't think you want to give your murderers and rapists and all those people into an inexperienced prosecution tent. So you've got to remain competitive in the marketplace to, to, to do that. You know, overall, our, our state funding is what it is. And this is something, we're just asking the county to, to update something that's been on the books for 40 years. So anybody have any questions or thoughts on it? I'd be happy to engage with you.
I, I think it's a great idea. I think it's well worth it. I, you know, coming from a background of law enforcement, I think being able to retain those people makes the community better, certainly makes it safer. And I get what you're saying about the experience. I mean, there's a dollar value in that that's hard to pinpoint, but I get it.
Thank you.
So Chris, you're saying there'll be four attorneys making, four, four assistant attorneys, district attorneys, four district attorneys making 24,000?
Correct.
Annually?
That's right. That supplements their pay. And I mean, I'm not, I mean, and we put it, we put it in here to cap it back. So I mean, I, you know, the DA, whether it's me or whoever comes in here after me can't add 10 DAs and come, come to you and say you owe on each one of them. I mean, your, your cost is going to be fixed at the pole. So I mean, if we could, if y'all would endorse it, obviously we want you to, ask you to, hopefully we'll think it's good and all that. We can put it on the agenda for, for January, get it, get it approved. And I'll get with Brenda in the Legislative Reference Service about getting the, getting the specific language done through the Legislative Reference Service and get it in the legislature for this coming up session that starts in February.
Everybody good?
Everybody good?
Mr. Chairman, do you think we do, would we do a resolution on that?
Yes.
Yes. Resolutional support.
Resolutional support. And I'll do a resolution, just a separate resolution for Angie's, just because it's such a, normally we wouldn't do that since it's a large, I mean, no.
It's a good idea.
Just do a one-time thing.
And then what will, you said what we'll do is pending the passage of this, you're going to have hers corrected.
Hers is already corrected. I corrected it today. Her, her salary changed. She's getting paid the 16,2 right now.
Okay.
So we just have to figure out when we're going to get the back pay on there.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chris.
All right.
Okay. Good enough. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Y'all are there.
I'm Michael Shipper. Not firm, just here today on behalf of the Florence Opportunity...
Oh, Florence Opportunity.
Fund. The developer of the Reverb by Hard Rock Hotel and Mr. Eugene Sack, of course, is the principal of the FOF. We are here today to ask for the commissioners' support for a package of certain tax incentives, abatements, and also a percentage of rebates of taxes on new revenue that we anticipate to be generated by this project. I'm not sure how much the commissioners know about this project to date. The city has entered into an agreement with us to rebate certain taxes on new revenues. And that, that was a rather lengthy process, but, but we're proud of having achieved that. And at this point, we're asking the county to also support us to enter into an agreement to provide rebates on certain new taxes for lodging taxes, sales taxes, and property taxes under what we call Amendment 772, which authorizes the county and the city to enter into agreements to rebate taxes for projects such as this that serve the public good. And then in addition to that, under what we call the rebate statute, Chapter 9D, I'm sorry, the abatement statute, Chapter 9D, we are going to ask for an agreement to abate certain sales taxes generated on transactions during the construction process of this project, as well as abate property taxes to, for a period of 20 years during the existence of the project. Couple of things to bear in mind, just the high points here. We are only seeking incentives that relate to non-educational revenue. Second overarching point I would add is that we are not asking the county to come out of pocket anything but to support the project with abatements or rebates for new revenue that comes in. I know this morning, you all received an illustration of forward-looking data on Reverb by Hard Rock. It's, it's a very exciting project that I personally think from Florence and seeing all the development in downtown, would love to see something like this come. Obviously, it would be quite a benefit, not only to us, but to the entire region. Reverb by Hard Rock, I'll certainly let Eugene talk about the guts of the project. But the only reason Reverb by Hard Rock is interested in this area, not the only reason, but, but one of the reasons why they selected this area was because of our musical heritage, which also makes this a tourist destination hotel, qualifying under these very statutory provisions. I sent an email with a letter, sort of a snapshot of these three areas of incentives that we are asking for. I'm not sure whether we sent them to the right address, but I brought my secretary very nicely came and brought me hard copies of that letter, which I'm happy to give to you all as well. What, what can I tell you? What can I talk about to...
One of the certain taxes the city is abating?
The, the city is not abating, if you will. They, they are agreeing to a rebate of 50% of the new taxes generated through sales taxes, lodging taxes, and property taxes for a period of 15 years after the project is up and running. So they are not coming out of pocket anything and, and only are going to share with us to the extent this new revenue actually comes in.
So, so you're asking us to abate the property and sales tax for 20 years?
Well, we're asking, yes, sir, the, the sales tax on the transactions that relate to the initial construction would be abated. And then once the project is up and running, the ad valorem property taxes, we're going to ask for an abatement of those property taxes for, yes, 20 years.
So, so what does the county get out of this project?
Well, the county, if they support the project, obviously, we're going, we, we hope to see a lot of big influx of a lot of tourism and other traffic, which we anticipate, based on these figures that you're looking at now, going to be a very, very significant influx of, of new jobs and 353 million projected in just new ways alone. So that was sort of, that would near to the benefit of Florence and the county and we think the entire, this area of North Alabama.
So we receive no sales tax?
You would receive...
No, we don't receive any sales tax. The county commission doesn't receive any sales tax.
Okay.
Chris, we can't abate that state tax in the county?
I, I don't, I don't know that. But I know that our sales tax is going to education and he's been told that.
And I can tell you from my perspective, we will not, I will not abate the state tax, which is a hazard sales tax.
That's our economic, that's our economic development.
Whether we can or not.
So the taxes you're talking about in the future are the ones that occur on that property? That's what you're wanting rebated?
Yes.
Is that right? That would be your restaurant, your...
Yes, correct.
Your merchandise, that type thing. So tell me a little bit about where you got these numbers because, I mean, there's a formula somewhere and who did those?
Can I, can I let Mr. Sack?
Sure.
Thank you.
I want to clarify a couple things. There are three groups of incentives. One's from y'all and then two are resolutions in support of state incentives. So let me just hit the first one, which is what we're asking the county for, which is a rebate of those taxes that can be rebated. So if it's educational, it can be rebated. We're not worried about that. The, the property tax, you said, what does the county get out of it? The educational property taxes are about 52%. So we're talking probably an increase of $300,000 per year in just the educational property taxes. This property will assess probably in the neighborhood, talked with David Ezekiel, near $52 million. So even though it's going to cost around 70 million to build it, it will assess probably in the low 50s. And we're asking for a group two, that's the abatement, that's the industrial development board abatement. That's where they abate long-term property taxes. That's a state incentive. It goes through the IDB to the state. And educational, there's still about 300,000 a year that's going to be coming back to the county for educational use. The question was about, where did the numbers come from? Younger and Associates, which is a specialist based out of Memphis. And I think we had forwarded that in an email about eight weeks ago, but I can provide copies of that. It's in full support, about a 75-page economic impact study. Younger and Associates is who helped locate Ford to the Blue City outside of Dixon, Tennessee. They're, they're a national farm. Everybody in, I have to tell you that learning how to lock Hard Rock in has been one of the hardest experiences of my life because they use only international and national companies. They don't use anybody in the region. Their architect is the largest architect in the world. You know, they're, they're, they're studies people out of Atlanta, this largest hospitality, tourism, and leisure group in the world that studies these things. The only people local is PCH for the Retirement Citizens of Alabama. As big as they are, they're the smallest guy on this project, PCH, that runs all the Marriott's of the Robert Trent Golf Trail. And they will be the managing partner on this property.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Sacks if he wouldn't just give us a synopsis of the overall, kind of the overall dream you have for Reverb here in, in Florence?
Reverb was introduced to us by PCH. I'm just a property owner, but you know, very fortunately, I'm a real estate developer and it's all come to pass that I've, I've been proud to be this nexus. The hotel, that rendering, the digital rendering is the newest version. It's eight stories tall, 155 rooms. So we're about three-quarters of the size of the Marriott. And we'll have a restaurant. It's 13,000 feet of retail on the bottom for restaurant and merchandise. And the top floor, the RT 6D, they call it the rooftop restaurant. There'll be 3,000 square feet of conference space on the top floor. And then there's about 4,000 feet on the bottom floor of cowork conferencing area, they call it. So it's a conference and what I would call is an executive conference center. Tony with PCH, Mr. Davis, he's the CEO of, and why they're so excited to have brought this property to Florence is really about three reasons. One is, it's unbelievable how much PCH loves the city of Florence's downtown because there's no other downtown like it in the South unless you get to Thomasville, Georgia, you know, Gainesville, Georgia. But we're the only downtown in the state that has in this corridor what it offers as far as entertainment, lifestyle, and quality of life. They want this to be their executive meeting center where their other hotels, the Marriott's or all these big conference centers, but when you get the judges coming together or the head of sanitation for the counties that come together, the 60-person group, the 90-person group, the 45-person group, they are fatigued on going to the same RSA hotels time after time after time. Same to Ross Bridge, the same to Riverview. There's a fatigue that has set in and they're starting to lose captured business even outside the state. So even these numbers are low because the hospitality, the hospitality study groups actually don't give full merit to what PCH is going to bring because they're the operator and they look at the market only. So actually, the numbers are going to probably increase over this by about 15 to 20% through operation by PCH.
So, I mean, I'm not sure what you're asking, but I'm going to ask what I think you're asking. The county commission wouldn't, wouldn't be getting anything, right?
Well...
What would we be getting?
Well, first of all, okay, property taxes for the, when you say the county commission, I'm not certain sometimes when I'm dealing with the different authorities, what y'all get in the first place. All right? I mean, when I'm sitting there with the city, they're saying, well, the county, and I was like, if y'all don't step up first, and that's a quackmire. I mean, y'all are a lot easier to deal with just straight up than the city to begin with. And I live here and I don't know how y'all get along. So I hope it's good.
We get 30% of the property tax of the county, 20 in the city. We get lodging tax.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. We're looking for a 50% rebate.
Yeah. I was just wondering how we would recoup it.
We not spending anything, so you're not recouping.
We got to pave roads to get there.
Sorry?
We got to pave roads to get there.
Not on this one. It's paved right there.
It'll have to be repaid. It'll have to be resurfaced.
Well, and the city's putting, and by the way, the city's putting in $350,000 worth of matching between a decka in the city of Florence, the work to the infrastructure they're putting in a matching with 350,000. That's not being asked for here. I'm not asking for any money from the roads. But again, I don't know who owes the roads. I mean, I thought that's city property, to be honest with you.
Well, you got to pave a county road to get to the city.
Yeah. So 50%? Let's, let's talk about group one. Group one is the, the first thing on it, which was the rebates of 50% of the taxes that we create at the property for 15 years.
So that's saying he's, the county's going to get, he's asking when we get the 50%?
You'll get that 50% for 15 years and then you get 100% after that.
That's off sales tax.
That's on...
Well, sales, lodging, use, rental, we don't know what taxes are defined again.
See, the only thing we get is the ad valorem off the property.
Okay.
Twenty percent of the property.
So we can get 20% of your hotel and then we would give you 10% back.
Yes, sir. Whichever tax that is.
And then what I was wondering is, this doesn't create any more property tax in the county, does it?
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah.
What is it?
Is he writing about the 30% ad valorem tax?
Asking me?
No, I'm asking the girl manager.
All right. So let me ask you this, Eugene.
I know General Flynn gets seven mill and Groger gets 3.5.
So it has to be divided, that has to be divided up.
What's top million?
28.5. Eighteen goes to the county board.
Yeah, but there's a difference between 28 and 30 when you're talking about millions of dollars.
Well, I'm rounding. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out.
What he's saying is we get, you get, we're going to get 28% ad valorem tax, but we'll get 14 and they get 14.
You guys get at a minimum...
That's what I took it as.
Is that right, Eugene?
What she said?
You guys will get at a minimum, because this is going to the industrial development board, that, on the 18 for that property tax. You guys get 45,000, oh, that's, that's this one. Well, that's 45,700 y'all get with zero abated on the sales and use tax for the construct. That's this sales and use tax. And then, so I'm asking for half of that. Does 24, 20? Ma'am?
Sales tax, we don't get any sales tax money, so we can't rebate anything.
Well, you're...
Because the board budget card.
Okay, well, then it's school money.
All sales tax.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, then we're not asking for half of that. We're not getting half of that. That's all, that's, when these guys put it together, there's no education. There's no problem.
The only thing we get is the ad valorem.
Okay.
Well, this might make a move here.
I would hope so.
I think temporarily, he's saying, let me ask you this. Here's a piece of the puzzle I think that's missing, and this is probably for Mr. Shipper. Do you know Anita in the back, our accountant?
I'm not sure that I do, but I'm happy to know you.
Here's what I would probably suggest, and this is just me. If, if she understood the numbers as an accountant and shared with you how that breaks down, it would make better sense to us. And I think it would eliminate a lot of the questions where she could go, hey, here's what we've been getting and they're going to want 50% of this or whatever the percentage is. Because, you know, we do this and we're responsible and we're part-time, right? And then we have these full-time professionals that are numbers-oriented people and just like with law, like we depend on Mr. Smith. But I think if Anita was involved in the process, it would make it easier. Does that make sense to y'all?
Well, the only thing I need to know is you're asking for a 20-year abatement on all property taxes.
Okay. That is the industrial...
Is that 20 years or 15? My email says 15.
Okay.
Which one?
Rebates and abatements. They're two different groups. And I think that's a new deal with that for everybody. That's a big, that's a big way of saying it.
We've never done rebates.
Right.
So you're talking about a 20-year rebate?
No, 15-year rebate.
15-year abatement.
Well, no, that's the IDB. That's the industrial development board. That's not here. There, yeah, let me, let's, this is a big project with a lot of moving parts and I totally get the complexity and I'm, and I, I'm not trying to take up two hours y'all's time or anything like that. It's, it's just, it's just...
Yeah, we want to understand.
It's got a bunch, yes, all right. 208 jobs permanently are being created by this project. 144 for the project and another 50 or 60 in the community. Okay, that's, so there are 200 jobs coming with this. $350 million worth of payroll.
So that gives us some...
That's real.
That'll give us a little bit of profit.
That's, that's community. That's 350. I actually explained once that the indirect value, I've done the math, when you take the downtown blocks and you go from one to six and three across from Seminary to Pine Street, if you just put a blanket on it, it's $600 per storefront, per month. That's what they're going to get in retail sales. Now, that may not sound like a lot, but that's a lot of retail that is impacting this, this walking distance. So that's group one, is a 15-year rebate of what we pay in that is not earmarked for education. And I don't know where else it goes. All right. That's the first. But to your question on the abatement, group two is the industrial development board has authority to grant abatements for projects that, that this meets, it's Title 11. So they can grant it 10 years automatically, but due to the size of project, we've asked for the 20 years, which they're allowed to do. And I'm asking for y'all to consent to that.
Yeah, when he, when he says industrial development board, is he talking about Satan?
No.
IDB.
IDB. Jim Stanfield is the guy with Scott Hothia. I was on it from 96 to 2004.
I didn't think that, I didn't think they collected money anymore.
They are the authority that grants industrial rebates inside the county and city, abatements, I'm sorry, I just misused the word, abatements for property tax, non-educational, ad valorem, and sales tax and use tax during the construction of an economic development project. And this meets the state standard of a tourism destination project. And this meets the state standard of a tourism destination project. So the IDB, that's group two, is IDB. And all we need from y'all on that is a future, a future resolution, not even tonight, that y'all will back them for what they do, because they have their own board. But the state requires the county and the city both approve a resolution to support the IDB. It's actually state law that you require. And then the third one is a brand-new Sweet Home Alabama Tourism Investment Act that just got approved in twenty twenty-three for projects over twenty-five million that are private, that are bringing people to the state. It's called, literally, Sweet Home Alabama Tourism Investment Act. And that's, and here we are with Muscle Shoals Hotel, Sweet Home Alabama. And that is a rebate of the state lodging taxes and the state sales taxes. So that's a state incentive. So first one is county matching what the city is just for effect, fifty percent. Group two is IDB resolution. And group three is a resolution for Sweet Home Alabama.
All right, let me suggest this, you guys, because I'm, I'm not sure I'm clear on what everything is at this point. Could you get with our attorney and hash out what's why? But I think you would need the accountant in there, because I know Mr. Smith's been involved with, with questions. But I would think the attorney, the accountant needs to be involved.
I might have access also to our figures, but actually the legality would be with our attorney. I would not know that.
The numbers and how. Well, when he's talking about lodging.
Is he talking about the lodging tax that we get back?
I have no idea. Here's the problem, October the twenty-fourth, we got this. It simply suggested similar rebates that the city gave. This update, I've just, I've got, I'm just now got, this is the first time I've heard of categories two and three. I don't know what to tell it to talk about.
I'm waiting.
So, yeah, we need to hash it out, but the problem is, you keep walking here and hand me this. I don't know anything about Sweet Home Alabama.
I agree. That's why I'm saying, get together with our.
Very much.
It might, it might him aware of what everything is so that he can advise us. At account.
Is your.
About if we need to.
Is your understanding that, that IDB board can abate your property tax completely?
The non, the non-education.
Other than education, I mean, they can, they can, without us doing anything, they can abate your property tax?
Yes.
For ten years.
For ten years. Yes, sir, thank you.
Where you getting with us, if I'm, if I'm wrong, is that they're asking for twenty, and I haven't read the statute, but what I'm hearing is that when you get over ten years, then it doesn't become an exclusive IDB decision, it becomes an IDB decision supported by resolutions that govern files. That's what I'm.
Yes, sir.
But I'm gonna tell you this, Chris, the industrial development board has never gone down this road before. They have left abatements up to the county commission.
To this point.
To this point.
Um, I was on the board for a number of years, and I abated Tassus and, and also Southwire when I was on it.
Most of the large arms, the industrial development.
I'm sorry?
And as most of the abatements we get are done by the industrial development.
Yeah, I'm saying, if, if they did those abatements, that they would be, I'm reading this correct, that they have the sole authority to do a ten-year or less abatement, then we get notice of it, but they didn't make major consent. Now, again, I don't read the statute myself, but that's what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that you get over ten years, they have to come to y'all for approval. You and the city, right?
Correct.
So if they abate it twenty years like you want, then the only thing you're asking us to do is give you fifty percent of the tourism tax, lodging tax.
That's what it sounds like.
I mean, that would be it.
If that's what it sounds like, that's all, if that's all that rolls through, because, you know, we've come to understand that there's like a two percent tax that y'all are collecting and then giving seventy-five percent back to the city that the city doesn't even recognize. They're like, we don't even know we're getting that. And we're like, well, it's kind of important. One point is a hundred thousand dollars a year. This is a big project.
No, I'm not sure what that split is, Chris, but it's, it's not. I thought we got the largest portion of the lodging tax. Uh, maybe, it may have been the, the actual tourism department may get the largest bargain, and I thought we were next.
They actually changed the law.
Yeah.
They weren't.
They actually changed the law to wherever the hotel or whatever is at, they send them the lodging tax. So if it's in Rogersville, state sends it to Rogersville. If it's in Anderson, state sends it to Anderson. City, they get theirs. All we get are unincorporated.
Oh, is that right? That's over the lodging tax we get.
On the lodging.
It would be like Joel Wither.
When did that change, Anita?
That's been several years ago.
The only thing I remember them doing was, uh, they imposed a higher tax on themselves certain hotels. I didn't know if they changed the.
You got a lodging tax.
That's the new TID, tourism investment.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what lodging tax, what thing affect us?
Two thousand and twelve's when it, what I'm, what you're talking about change?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, well, that's.
So it, 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 please correct me, I'm, I'm just talking, but if y'all are saying for them to move forward and try and create, try and create the agreement, that y'all have to vote on it anyway later, the first thing you have to do is say, y'all can do this together and start trying to figure it out.
You understand.
Yeah, yeah. Because we can't do it without y'all. And this is a three-step process. I think first is they kind of negotiate out, then there's a hearing on it, and then there's a final passage, just like the city. It took from June until September for that to work through the city. I think y'all will be a little bit faster than that.
I think we will.
But, uh, I mean, the last six weeks have been elections and Thanksgiving. And so, you know, we wanted to be here in October, but the schedule didn't allow it for anybody. But so, and so that's what we're looking for. We're looking for y'all to say, one, yes, let's move forward and let the lawyers and all respectable parties to get involved to figure out if there's rebates, if there's development agreement, they can work that. And then the other two are consents for the state-sponsored, the IDB and the Sweet Home Alabama Act.
Yeah, we need to see that, because I.
Well, and that'll come back. See, we're not even, that's what, we're not even asking for that tonight. We're just saying, there's going to be this, and it's coming, and I was wanting to get that and educate y'all on those two tonight.
Basically, packages one and two is what we're talking about. So, Mr. Shipper, well, let me read the statute first. I'm not a living idiot. And sit down with Michael and Anita and then map out, and, and don't let us leave that room with a misunderstanding. We map out what we're actually asking for and what the law is, and then I can get that to y'all to be reviewing during this month of December, and then we can see.
We need to see.
Or then you can tell us.
Exactly.
Fair enough.
That sounds good.
Just chairman, that's exactly what I'd like the force to do, is move forward.
And I'm understanding better than they are, but I'd like.
I'm not sure I am, but.
Oh, I said better, I said better.
Said better.
We haven't done rebates before, we've done abatements. And we did do that with the solar plant, I mean, if we did solar, we had all this discussion before. I just need, I just have some serious questions about when he talks about sales. I'd like to see what, you're talking about y'all's sale, you know, your, your sales. You're not talking about the county-wide sales.
Correct, yeah, just what we produce.
Just what you produce.
All the indirect value, that impact, that's the benefit.
When you're talking about pre-building and all that stuff, sales tax, we can't help you on that.
Right.
It's, it, they, that goes to the support of education. We don't get it, we don't see it, it goes to them directly, to them, so.
Sounds like we're not gonna be, not involved in profit, a lot of taxes either.
Yeah, lodging, we do get lodging tax.
From the city?
No, we get, we get our portion of lodging tax.
From the city?
No, from, from the state.
From the state. We get, we.
They send the other ones where it's supposed to go.
What we get from the state? Or we get fifty percent then?
I don't know, because he said, he's talking about just on what they generate, and we would have to try and figure out what they generate.
That's true, that would be on what I generate.
We've got that three ways from Sunbeam, what we're gonna generate. We got all these lenders that are standing on top of that, you know, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Do you guys wanna set up an appointment, Tom? Do you all wanna go ahead and?
I'm gonna call him tomorrow, I head out of court, look at his schedule, then I'll get with Anita, and then we'll come back up to this board.
Okay.
So I'll be in port tomorrow morning, just call him, I'm gonna look at their schedule.
I'm gonna be on down Thursday, through next Tuesday.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, what are the schedules to make it, to make it happen?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Is this yours?
Yeah.
Again, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
I don't know if I can follow that or not. I'm just on my panel, I'm trying to understand, so we can fix it.
I just had a quick question. I took a couple of y'all on the phone. I have an opening right now that I'm looking at filling. I have one opening, but I have two very qualified candidates that I'm looking at. Probably looking at hiring someone tomorrow. But I have two very qualified candidates, well-seasoned officers, well-trained officers, a lot of years of experience. One opening, two guides available. And I was going to see if I could hire for both of those and let, on the back end, let it drop off through attrition. Now, the downside of that is I don't know when that would drop off. I don't, you know, I don't have anything just on the immediate horizon where there's gonna be another person leave that I know of. I think we've done that before.
Well, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Okay, you say you've got two qualified employees that you wanna hire. Do they have to go to any kind of school or anything?
No.
They don't have to go any schooling? They're not gonna come in and we're gonna send them nowhere? They're totally trained, no, no, gotta go anywhere for any kind of certifications or anything?
Sworn officers, fully certified.
Okay, now, okay, so you got, you got, if, you got, then you're gonna get an extra officer, you're gonna be able to cut out all this overtime, along with overtime you got? Because you could probably pay for it if you cut out your overtime. Your overtime's just all out of place, all out of place.
Let me, let me, let me, I don't wanna get into that, that. So you got APO certified, is that the right, my, all the right terminology is similar. Been to the academy?
Yes, and go to work immediately. We're a month into budget, I didn't know my overtime was that far out of way.
Well, I mean, we're, we're in a brand-new fiscal year, you know, we, we, here's my thought. We're a brand-new fiscal year. If you can save, like you're talking about, if you can save the academy, get the experience, I mean, that's hard to come by in law enforcement today. I mean, you, you're responsible, you manage your budget, right? I mean, you've gotta make that at the end come through, and I mean, we're, we're not at the end of it, we're at the beginning of it. So without some unforeseen circumstance, I think there'll be attrition through someone leaving or retiring. I mean, it makes sense to, to, if you can save that money and get, get someone with, with experience. That's just, that's my thought, that's what she wrote up. If this guy's, or if this individual's already certified.
Joe, what do you think that attrition is, just your best guess?
Basically, that, that job going away, going down the line. But now.
Are we talking about?
I don't know the time frame.
You just don't, that's, that's not be hard to.
I don't have anybody's, that's turned in retirement paperwork. May have somebody else leave tomorrow, I don't know, could happen.
What about comp time and all that stuff? Because you got a lot of that already. You know, I mean, if you got an extra officer, you should be able to get rid of some overtime and comp time and stuff. I haven't, I can't give you the numbers, but I was just, HR was voicing the concerns of, you know, how many, how much overtime that your employees are getting.
Joe, it's gotten hard to find good officers out.
It has.
Yeah, I mean, I say go ahead and do it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be in favor of going ahead and do it.
Absolutely.
I, I mean, and you know, y'all, here's the thing, you know, this, this argument can be made in many places, but the, you know, if you've got a, a deputy or you have a skilled person, that, that's a little different scenario. I mean, you know, I'm not crazy about it, but I don't know, you know, you having a hard time finding them, I don't know what else you do. You, you find them when you latch on to it.
Yeah, absolutely.
The time you pay for them to go get certified, the time you pay for somebody else to train them, the time you pay for them to be able to be on their own, it's expensive.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Eric.
You mean, I hadn't missed Eric. Are you serious?
Hopefully, he's gonna be.
Page, page one. So, it shouldn't be too many, I have to write that. Good news is, it's five weeks where you'll see me, yeah.
Yeah.
On the January agenda, between here and there, because we do have such a, a large gap between here and our next meeting, between here and there, we're gonna put out bids for some flatbed trucks that we had budgeted. So we'll, we'll need to put that on the January agenda.
It's on the budget, we don't have to put it on the agenda, you can go ahead and order. We, we usually do, we're gonna buy them. If you didn't budget them, we have to put them on the agenda.
They're budgeted, we have to bid them out. We'll open the bids on January second.
Oh, okay, right, that's something, I thought you were talking about.
We need to prove the bids on January. Next thing is just kind of a heads up on Brush Creek Park. I don't know if y'all are getting all that communication like I'm getting, but Bo Cooper over there with Brush Creek, DECA is, they're asking for some crazy stuff. They're going back through that application and just want verification on just very peculiar detailed stuff. And so just, just wanna give y'all a heads up on that.
Is it a DECA one?
Yeah, it's, and it's just weird, it's weird stuff. Like, like questioning why there's no mobilization in the bid for the electrical contract bid. I don't know, like.
What's Brush Creek?
Call Commissioner Park.
Mr. Lynn, help out on the question, what's that?
Yeah, it's, it's bizarre. I just kinda wanna give y'all a heads up, it's, because they're getting some very bizarre questions. This thing is dragging on for a long time. So just know, if y'all get communication on that or get questions, that's, Bo's, Bo's working on it. But I mean, they're, they're hitting with a lot of, a lot of very detailed.
He's gotta have a completed application by February, or he's somebody.
It's not, it's not long, I'll.
No. And, and I, something else they mentioned, like the, you know, we turned in on the playground, just basically the, the bid we had for playground. I said that wasn't sufficient, they want more than that, I don't, I don't want that wall. But, uh, so that's one of the first things he's gonna be asking for too, is trying to fulfill whatever they're asking for. So it's, I'm telling you, for a playground, it's been a, it's been a very, very time-consuming project. So I just, I just wanna give y'all a heads up on that. He's, he's working on it, but he's pretty frustrated too. They're just, they're just, but every time you answer all the questions, they come back with a whole other sheet of stuff they want. So just, just kinda wanna give y'all a heads up on that. Uh, next thing, we, we have a motor grader, it's a two thousand and three model. We, if you recall, we've got, um, we've got one ordered. Once we get the, the newest one we're buying, we'll have four, like, new graders, like graders that are within six years old, that we're gonna rotate, try to sell through Jamwood and kind of keep those fresh. But we've still got two older ones, those yellow graders are still joystick machines. But they are pre-DEF, you know, DEF being the exhaust fluid that goes into the modern diesel stuff. There's a lot of value on big yellow machines that are pre-DEF. And so they are just, you just don't have to deal with a lot of stuff. And so we had a transmission go out of one of our older graders, and it's what we keep, it's kind of our floater, it's our backup. It's really our go-to on snow as well. We found that those machines are a lot heavier than the new machines, and they just did better in the last event we had. But that transmission's probably gonna be fifty grand to fix it. Kind of replace those things, you know, you're over three hundred, but even if you replace it, you replace it with a DEF machine. So we, we, it, it's actually a source well, you know, we don't even have to bid it, but still, I don't, I don't like spending that much money on a repair. That'll just talk to y'all and just let you know, we wouldn't do that just on any machine, but, but a pre-DEF grader, I think it's the right decision to, to put that kind of money.
How many hours, I don't care.
I don't know.
What's the life of one of those?
Would it be a pre-DEF? I'd say, I hate to say forever, but it'd be, I mean, if we have to replace an engine or a transmission, but to keep it, to keep it the old way, there's just a lot of value in that. So I would, I would really like to keep those as our, as our kind of floaters, as we're transitioning through the new ones for the ever they use, to keep those for, just to have on hand, it's something we just kind of keep for the long haul and as we cycle through the new ones.
So I guess your number one piece of equipment for snow and ice?
Yes, sir.
That's a repair.
And how much is it gonna be? And how much is it gonna be?
It's, our first estimate's fifty.
So, you have to bid it out?
Well, it's source well.
Oh, okay.
They can do their repair on source well. I don't quite understand that, but it's legal, we check on it, and we've actually done it.
It's fine if it's source.
Do, do you run chains when...
We have chains, but operators do not, they don't feel comfortable with the, on the graders. I don't, I can explain it, but they don't, they, they just don't like the feel of it. So, they've got that big blade that they can stop with, and so...
How do they get traction sometimes? I mean...
It's tough, but they're heavy machines. They, they, they do okay, but the, the guys, we, we bought chains for them, but they just, I don't know, they, they don't... I really tried to, they just...
Just not used to that noise?
I, I don't know. I don't know if it's just maybe the feel, and that, that was kind of, it's the, the ride of it, I think, was the, they just didn't feel like they were under control, and, or from a, maybe you could tell what they were doing, you know? So, I, you know, I'm not saying we won't try them again, but, but our, uh, let's see. Two of our grader operators have been here thirty-four, thirty-five years, and so they're, they've just done it one way. So, maybe our, um, they're getting ready for retirement, and that's somewhere in the, they, they try it.
The grader northwest, they, they run with them like crazy.
That means a lot to me, too, yeah. But, but then again, and I struggle with that, you know? From a safety standpoint, you know, if they tell me they're not comfortable doing it, I, I hate to push them, you know? I would like for them to play with it, something to figure it out.
I'd be uncomfortable without them.
Yeah, I know. Well, and of course, you know, a snow a year or two, it's hard for those guys. You know, they don't wait, they don't usually have time to play, you know, to, to train, you know? It's usually just go where, and so... Next thing, we've talked about this thing forever, it's finally time to put it on the agenda. This is the, uh, the Pimentela at Wilson Lake, Phase One, it's Roger Brown subdivision. We, we're gonna put that on the January agenda. He's still got a few little details he's working out. There's an eleven-hundred-and-thirty-five-dollar check with that as well. He, he decided to pay all of his fees upfront, which is not quite normal, but he wanted to go ahead and just do that. So, he's paid his front-end and back-end fees, so... We, we've met, since we've talked about that, we've met again, went through, done some more tweaking and designing on that. And they're, they're finishing up their final design stuff, but we've got plenty of time between here and January to make sure that it's right. And if they keep it right, we'll keep it on the agenda and look at it in January.
Is that the one, yeah, we're down twenty-seventy, is that on there?
No, this is the one, basically the, right across from Turtle Point.
Oh, the one there?
Behind Lock Six.
Yeah, okay.
Um, next thing, I'm, I'm excited to report this to y'all. Y'all remember my friend, Mr. Warren, he's come spoke to us several times, at County Road 590, 597, up in Elton. You know, the request of Mr. Warren has been, we, we understand the discrepancy, you know, you say this, and tax assessor says this, like, but we gotta have something to prove it. Well, he called me Friday, you want to come see me at ten o'clock this morning? Well, he came, seen me at ten o'clock this morning, and he had his survey. And his survey is correct. It's not exactly what he thought it was, but it's still in his paper. And so, he owns both sides of that County Road 597. I've actually contacted Billy's office, the mapping department, and asked him, sent them the, the survey, and asked them to revise it to, to show a more accurate depiction of what's going on up there. I also called Mr. White, who's the property that was adjoining, who had requested access, explained it to him, he understood. And he said, hey, I mean, I get it. He said, I was going by the tax assessor, it looked like I had, you know, road prints back there. So, I mean, I was, you know, I thought if I had it, I wanted to use it. I said, I don't blame you. I said, I hope you see our side of it, we're just, but we have to do what's right. He said, no, I get it completely, it's fine. So, he was, he was at home. So, I am going to document all of this very well. I'll make sure, I'll get, I'll get Chris the copy of that, and just kind of ma- make sure we've got it all on paper. My recommendation, I think we need to vacate that road. They want to vacate that road, they own all the, they own all the property adjoining it. We have, we have minimally maintained that road for a long time. You know, I mean, we...
When you got the old thirty-year guns, the zip records, was that a county road name?
Yeah, in nineteen eighty-one, it was given to us.
In eighty-one?
Well, we got our current.
And he's asking to vacate?
He'd like to.
If he owns both sides of it, sure, I'm for it.
No, it's, we, I need to talk to Chris about that, and it's, it's an estate, and so, I got a feeling it's gonna be complicated. So, I, I need to talk to Chris about the details on it.
Right.
I, I do think we need to, we need to try to make that happen. But we need, I'll get with Chris, and we'll get with Mr. Warren, you know, to get that ball rolling. But, but it, it could be a little complicated, but hopefully, hopefully not, so... But, look, I love it. I love it when a player comes together, so that, that worked out great.
Happy ending.
Yeah, and it's, and, and Mr. Warren, he's great, and I'm, I'm sure I've told you all this already, but we, he and I made a deal when this whole thing was over with, because we, we didn't get along all with, you know? He was mad at me a lot during this. You know, we, we, me and him was gonna go to dinner, and I'm by. So, we, we, so we, me and Mr. Warren, he was gonna watch my boys play basketball, so we, we're good. Last thing I've got, tomorrow, I'll be down speaking to the new commissioners, uh, training in Montgomery. Then we have legislative committees, legislative, uh, convention conference on Wednesdays, Thursdays, I'll be there. And so, I'm speaking on Thursday to the engineers, I'll be speaking tomorrow. So, next week, I am out of town and off the grid. So, if you need me, I will be based on available. So, if it's urgent, get with David. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right. Tom?
Big thing is, uh, since Christmas Eve's a holiday, we'll close the office and landfill, and they, they go home. So, they'll give them half a day and half off. So, we'll still be there taking wire, wire rig or stuff on Tuesday, but we'll, we'll shut the lamp and that, and then try to get them out as soon as possible.
You go get my garbage Tuesday morning?
Your garbage will be picked up Tuesday morning, before you ever wake up.
So, when does it move, move back?
Only thing I'll move back will be Wednesday, we'll pick it up on Thursday.
Wednesday will be Thursday.
Yeah, we'll delay one day that week. We'll work Saturday, but just since we're working Saturday, just give them a little extra time off, too. We could work all day on Tuesday, but I think most of them would rather go home, spend some time with their family, so... I told them it's Garner's idea, so they can...
It's my idea.
Yeah, but we'll just be delayed one day. Same thing with, they've been delayed one day for New Year's also, but we won't close anything, everything will be the same. Only other thing, and I'm working with Chris on something, and nothing major, just, uh, get rid of an old wheel, so... That's it?
Good holiday.
Y'all have the same, thank y'all.
Thanks, Tom.
Also, one thing about, we're having a, our dinner is the twentieth.
Twenty?
Twentieth. Y'all are all, y'all are all welcome, with the exception of a few.
That's what...
Martin.
Oh, Martin.
No, come on Friday, come between eleven, eleven-thirty, twelve, whatever. We, I'll have it ready for them by the time they come rolling in at eleven, so... See y'all later.
Billy, do you have something?
I don't know.
Okay. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of updates tonight, more than new information. So, we, first, I guess most importantly, we have hired a new employee down in EMA. His name is Wesley Tidwell. He comes to us from Killen. He is a volunteer firefighter, he's a board member with the Volunteer Association. He has background in law enforcement, and is an instructor for both law enforcement and for fire. So, he really fills a, a big gap for us in getting out into the community. A couple of things just to kind of be aware of, as we've worked through winter weather preparedness on both the city and the county side. One thing that I think is important, we have two, if, if you're aware, we have two dialysis companies that operate within Lauderdale County. We've met with both of those dialysis companies, and both of them have third-party contracts for support and for patient transportation during inclement weather. So, I know that that has been something that's kind of been looming, uh, as to how do we get those patients from point A to point B. So, we have got that worked out. We did meet with what's called the Directorate of Military Support. So, the DOMS unit is a section of the Alabama National Guard that handles all domestic operations. So, if there's a hurricane that hits, if there's a tornado that hits, if there's bad weather that hits, all of those type of things. This is the organization, or the group, or the section of the National Guard that would, that would come and support. In years past, and kind of, I guess, growing up in, in first response, it was kind of a given that if inclement weather hit our community, then we could expect National Guard Humvees to, to be around. The way that the Guard has portrayed that is, that's when it was a my hometown National Guard. And so, they have changed, they have re-postured, and so that kind of affects our readiness. I bring it up to simply say this. In the future, if we have inclement weather or something that comes through our community, do not expect to see Humvees, uh, within Lauderdale County. And that's kind of two things. One, they act at the direction of the governor, and the governor's direction to the Alabama National Guard is that the interstate network is primary first foremost and needs to be handled before anything else. So, those resources, in the event of inclement weather, are going to be directed to 565, I-65, and I-22, going through north, uh, the north half of Alabama. And then, of course, you get down in Birmingham and those type of things. So, that group, even if we do try to use them, is likely gonna be stationed out of Jasper. Jody Hitt and I, uh, over in Calvert County, are trying to work on a little bit of a compromise with that, and having them stationed at the National Guard Armory in Sheffield. They had some serious logistical issues during their last deployment up here, getting back and forth across the bridges, namely because the bridges, in certain areas, were being closed by the state because they're state roadways. The county commission did not close any roads, but the state did make some determinations, which created some obstacles for them. So, just kind of know that that's, that's hanging out there. We did work with the university as they closed out their semester, and with the College of Nursing, they have two drills every year, and so, our staff was involved in working with them, so that went well. And then, we are testing for new nine-one-one dispatchers tomorrow. Hope to have those individuals in place by the first of December, and are continuing to be, move forward with the new dispatch system. Have had some really good conversations, and have made some real good headway. And so, that system will be functional by March, but we're not gonna go live with it until July, just so that we have an opportunity to, to, to do a little bit more training, um, across the board.
Oh, Brad?
Sure.
In digging with the, with the, with the Guard leadership, are, are they abreast of all of this? Because I, you know, this last event, I heard they were frustrated because no one ever called them to, to get involved.
Yeah, so there were two breakdowns that happened. One, one locally, no way to sugarcoat it, we, we made some errors, uh, at the county level, and how that should be handled. The other issue was how those requests were being, um, communicated back to the Guard. And so, that has been remedied. Number one, for, if you look, the state of Alabama is divided into regions. Those regions incorporate about eleven counties per region, and each of those regions has a liaison or a director for, for that region. Until July of this past year, we were sharing that regional director with someone else. And so, that was a little bit of loss in translation that happened, but we do have that. Now, as far as what the Guard will and won't do, the Guard will not do transports unless it's an emergency. The Guard is waiting for a JAG opinion on whether or not they can move medically necessary individuals. There's a lawsuit that came out of the last event that's raised some red flags. They will do route recon, um, they will not do road clearing unless the local tow services within the county declare that they can no longer operate. In that instance, they can do toes, but that toe is simply to the side of the road. So, it would simply be an effort to say, all right, Judge Hill, we've got five vehicles that are stuck on Judge Hill, and Eric and Hillary can't get through there to salt it, so then we could request that the National Guard come in. Understanding in that case, that the way that the National Guard deployment's gonna work is, there's gonna be one eight-man team that's gonna be responsible for our division, for our region of the state. And they will respond to calls anywhere from Fayette County up to Tennessee, from Mississippi to Limestone County, big area. And so, it's likely that in those, with those resources, that we're gonna be waiting an extended amount of time for them to get here. What our plan is at this point is to try to take advantage of wildlife, fisheries, and forestry with some of their resources to move some folks around. But I think it was a really good thing that the dialysis centers recognized what happened last time, and have made third-party arrangements for their patients. That takes a tremendous amount of stress off of us, and then gets us back to, in the county, really, I think, two, maybe three locations that Eric and I are still continuing to work through, and will continue to work through that. So, no, no issues where any of that stuff is concerned. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so the lawyer representing the community colleges on the rental negotiations, having done the crack at, uh, putting it in home. So, please review that, um, and then I'm gonna get the rock and let it wait, and say, my goal is to get it, uh, in some sort of final form, so it can go forward and be signed in January, especially on the MOU about the funding that takes place post haste. So, any, anything left that needs to be tweaked, we'll tweak it, uh, maybe now and before Christmas, so that it can be, uh, not only on our joint, but on for their state board to get their resolution. And, um, other than that, I've got claims that I'm dealing with, I got a petition to vacate, a utility easement, I gotta get the hair comb, and then all the other issues I've worked on with the Department of Health. And so, I'll get with all of y'all, uh, just any issue that you got between now and then. I've got a little client emergency that's come up, I gotta go to my office, so I'll get with Brenda on anything that comes up.
All right.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, we're with that department, isn't it? I just want to remind her that our ARPA, all of that has to be closed down December the thirty-first.
ARPA part revenue reduction is being cleared, the ten million. We still have the ARPA that's being used for the air handling over in the courthouse. But it is committed, yes, there's a contract for that, so as long as we have a contract, it's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like the Department of Health to get over there.
I just got a couple of things. Are we gonna have a work session on January the sixth?
And we get a big meeting out of...
The unincorporated, which is not much. And we get a...
If we don't do the work session, we'll be making a cancel.
January the thirteenth.
If it misses work session, if it's something, we gotta go ahead and do the...
So, if something comes up, just call it.
I know, I...
Yeah, I think it's right down there. Nope, no schedule.
Okay, um, there's a couple of things I've got here. We have March like the key birthdays, this is January the twentieth, but that doesn't change, it's on Monday, but we don't meet that Monday, so we don't have to do that. The, um, we have an, I have an FMLA that I put on the budget, I put on the, I put on the agenda for this, for the meeting later on. He has office paperwork and everything in order, his family medical layback, Tom. And then, a resolution, uh, and this will be on the thirteenth, is the resolution for the sales and tax, severe weather. You know, they do that one day a year, buy stuff or some things. And we'll do a sales tax on that, too, but I haven't got the information on that yet. And, um, the, um... There's a couple of things on the meeting that, that are on the agenda for this, for tonight, and that G-square, Billy, is, we had, we've already passed that, really, but we hadn't put it on the contract. That's for that, uh, those drones and...